Mic check, yep.
Don't know it. Thank you.
Okay, you did sit in.
How you doing?
Bring your music or something. We always.
Thank you. So nobody can hear me.
I got ready to.
Yeah, until next year. Oh yeah, we did, enclosed.
Good evening and welcome to the monthly Board of Education meeting for Elizabeth City Pasquotank Public Schools. ECPPS is a progressive public school district committed to reimagining education so that all students are given choices to discover and explore their hopes and dreams. And now to begin the meeting, Board of Education Chairperson Angela Cobb.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Education meeting for February 24th, 2025. At this time, would everyone please stand for our pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, and then be seated. We would like to welcome everyone here this evening, and we will begin our meeting tonight with Ms. Parker and our roll call.
Chair Cobb.
Here.
Vice Chair Perezza.
Here.
Dr. Sheila Williams.
Present.
Tommy Old.
Here.
Angelique Orland.
Here.
Valerie Voges.
Here.
And Sharon Morden.
Present.
Erica Moore is not here. Brandon Moore.
Present.
And Ruby Nunez-Ranaya.
Present.
Thank you, Ms. Parker, and now we're going to ask Dr. Williams if she will read our ethics awareness statement.
It is my duty to remind members of the board that it is your responsibility to avoid all conflicts of interest and potential conflicts of interest in accordance with Chapter 138A of North Carolina general statutes. As public servants, it is your duty to continually monitor, evaluate, and manage your personal, financial, and professional affairs in such a way as to ensure the absence of conflicts or potential conflicts. Does any member know of any conflict of interest or potential conflict of interest with respect to any matter coming before the board today? Let the record reflect that no conflicts exist.
Thank you so much, Dr. Williams. At this time, we need a motion to amend the agenda for February 24th, 2025, to add to the letter H promotion standards under new business. So can I get that motion from someone, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Perezza, and can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Do we have any discussion this evening? No discussion is noted, please show your positive vote with a show of hands. Let the record reflect that is unanimous. Okay, now we're going to turn over our agenda to Dr. Parker and some recognition.
We need to approve the agenda as amended.
I'm sorry, thank you. Okay, we need to approve the agenda as amended. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Okay, we have Ms. Perezza, can I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Williams, all right, any discussion? Can we have a positive vote with a show of hands, please, to approve the agenda? Fantastic, thank you, that is a unanimous vote. Now we'll turn it over to, thank you very much, Ms. Robinson. Now we'll turn it over to Dr. Parker for our recognitions this evening.
Thank you, Chair Cobb, and good evening, everybody. It's great to see everybody that has come out tonight. We're really excited about the recognitions we're going to have on the board's agenda tonight. And we're going to start and ask our CTE Director, Ms. Sheila Overton, to come forward to recognize some members of our team, followed by some Presidential Mathematics Awards. I believe Mr. Josh Sawyer is going to introduce that. And then we'll conclude with some really exciting recognitions from Weeksville Elementary with Principal Schiffbauer.
Thank you, Ms. Overton.
Good evening, I am excited to stand and continue to celebrate Career and Technical Education Month. We have some individuals from CTE that I would like to recognize on this evening. And while we have phenomenal staff amongst all of CTE, these particular individuals stood out. With that being said, do we want to do a group or one by one? One by one or group? Okay, so as I call the CTE staff members, please take your certification or your certificate and stand by the board. We have four individuals who could not make it tonight because of previous engagements with family or sports, and I would just like to give them a shout out as well. Ms. Angela Hayes, she's the Health Sciences teacher from Northeastern High School. Ms. Jennifer Mitchell, who is the Business teacher from Northeastern High School. Ms. Marquita Wiggins, who is the Marketing teacher from Pasquotank County High School. And Mr. Dale Smith, who is the firefighter from Pasquotank County High School. Next, I would like to call Ms. Monica Manzer and Mr. Daniel Manzer to the front. As they come up, I would like to share that Northeastern High School's FFA is the largest chapter in Northeast North Carolina with 244 members at large. So this qualifies them to apply for the National Gold Chapter Award this semester that could recognize them as a national outstanding chapter of distinction at both state and national level. Now, if I continue to say everything there is to say about these folks, we'd be up here four hours. So I'm going to condense that in saying that they also advise competitions such as veterinary science, natural resources, land judging, and livestock. Please congratulate Mr. and Mrs. Monica Manzer. Next, I ask Mr. Tony Johnson to please come up. Now, this person, he is. He is a natural leader at Northeastern High School. He's never afraid to try anything new. With that being said, he is going to support our aviation academy through his pathways in CTE. He has become a support buddy to many CTE teachers and non-CTE teachers. He also serves as the CTE Department Chair and Member of the Sit Team. I present to you Mr. Tony Johnson. Next, I'm going to ask Mr. Christopher Richley to come to the front. So Mr. Richley will be closing out his third year as teacher here at ECPPS, and he has just blossomed, and he is a true leader in his building at PCHS. He is beginning to lead PLCs focusing on analyzing data and facilitating discussions on best practices for improving student literacy. He partners with various departments with cross-curricular integration and collaboration. He also leads hands-on initiatives, coordinating projects with his construction students throughout the buildings to offer any support possible. For example, the dismantling of retired desks and chairs so that the greenhouse could be used for other activities in CTE. Let's give it up for Mr. Richley. Next, I'm asking Ms. Shanita Moore to please come to the front. Ms. Shanita Moore is our Special Populations Coordinator, and she ensures that every student who qualifies under the Special Populations category receives services and have access to career and technical education classes and activities. She works really close with our Exceptional Children's Department to ensure that all of our students are successful in the programs, offering strategies to teachers who need support in this area. She also led our Fall Semester Interns, ensuring that all of the guidelines from DPI, we complied and we were able to rode that program out successfully. She also does all of our publications for CTE Facebook, and if you're not following, check us out, you'll be missing lots of good stuff. And lastly, she led the initiative of CTE Student of the Month. She was wanting to capture students who may not get recognized in any other regular situation. These are students that you see in a corner, they don't talk a whole lot, they may not have the highest academic level, but they still shine in their classrooms. So let's give it up for Ms. Shanita Moore. Next, I would like to call, because these two ladies have very similar roles, Ms. Mary Luton and Ms. Courtney Simpson. So Mary is from Pasquotank County High School, and Courtney Simpson is from Northeastern High School. They both serve as Career Development Coordinators. They assist students in navigating through career paths, resume writing, interview techniques, networking with potential employers. They are currently leading our Spring Internship Opportunities with students. They plan and implement career activities throughout the schools, many course fairs, military, and various other events. They also focus on our middle school where we know the focus is much needed, offering career awareness to these students. They are also responsible for leading our CTE 5th grade event annually. Let's give it up for Mary Grace Luton and Courtney Simpson. And lastly, I would like to ask Ms. Helga Brown to please come to the front. So Ms. Helga Brown is our Curriculum and Instruction Management Coordinator. She oversees the implementation and evaluation of curriculum, and she ensures that it aligns with educational standards, the students' needs, and supports the administrators, the teachers, and other stakeholders. She is responsible for all of CTE's accountability, testing, credentials, project-based measures, and she leads all of the PLCs in CTE. Let's give it up for Ms. Helga Brown. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. The Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching, also known as the PAINTS Award, are the highest honors bestowed by the United States government specifically for K-12 science, technology, engineering, mathematics, and/or computer science teaching. A worthy service models for their colleagues, inspiration to their communities, and leaders in the improvement of STEM education. Since 1983, more than 5,200 teachers have been recognized for their contributions to STEM education. Up to 110 teachers are recognized each year. At ECPPS, we are honored to recognize two teachers who have received nominations. Upon recognition, the teachers have completed an intense application process which required these teachers to reflect deeply on their experience and teaching practices, providing a rewarding professional development experience. Let's please give them a hand when we call them up. When your name is called, please come forward to receive your certificate. The first one is presented to Ms. Erin Gray. It says Certificate of Recognition is presented to Erin Gray from Northeastern High School for your nomination for the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. We also have Certificate of Recognition. This Certificate of Recognition is presented to Elizabeth Wooton from EC, excuse me, Elizabeth City Pasquotank Early College for your nomination for the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Jim Schiffbauer, the proud principal of Weeksville Elementary School. I also have with me Ms. Dawn Styllings, my Assistant Principal. We're here to share with you some fabulous individuals we'd like to recognize, our Weeksville staff members, and some awesome Weeksville students. First, we have teacher Stefan Bill. Mr. Bill is the heart of our Exceptional Children's Team. He's a team leader and always willing to help. Mr. Bill is also one of our awesome elementary school basketball coaches. Thank you, Mr. Bill, for all you do for us. Next, I have Ms. Triniqua Felton. Ms. Felton is our amazing music teacher that engages all our students in the love of music. Ms. Felton always has a smile and is a ray of sunshine around Weeksville Elementary every day. Thank you, Ms. Felton, for everything you do. Next, I have Ms. Lisa Gaiet. Ms. Gaiet is our wonderful school counselor that supports not only our students, but also our staff's well-being. She is a true team player and is always upbeat and positive around Weeksville. Thank you, Ms. Gaiet, for everything you do for us every day. Next, I would like to recognize Ms. Allison Hopper. Ms. Hopper is our outstanding art teacher that hooks students into the creative side of the fabulous art pieces that they hang in our hallway every day. Ms. Hopper is a wonderful person that does great things with art, and we couldn't do anything without her. Her artistic abilities definitely shine around Weeksville. Thank you, Ms. Hopper. Next, I would like to recognize Ms. Adriana De Leon. She goes by Ms. A. Ms. A is one of our fantastic reach associates that we have at Weeksville. She works with second and third grade students. She teaches small group students, she teaches whole groups of students, as well as she translates for us when we're struggling to speak with our Spanish-speaking families. Ms. A pretty much does it all for us for second and third grade and through the rest of the school. Thank you again for, Ms. A, for being a valuable asset to Weeksville. Now I could stand up here the rest of the time and announce I am one of my staff members because they're awesome, but we had to select just a small number to keep this meeting short. But I do have some students that I would like to recognize. And again, I have 315 students that are fantastic, but we did select a small number. I would like to start out with my kindergarten student, Lucas Smithley. Come on up, Lucas. His kindergarten teacher said that he is an outstanding student and such a good friend to everyone in class. He's also a great helper with everyone as well. Lucas, your kindergarten teacher loves you. Next up for first grade, I have Harmony Critidin. Her teacher said she works extremely hard in school and loves to read, and she is such a joy to teach every day. Come on up, Harmony. Next, I would like to recognize Judson Lamb, my second grade student. Come on up, Judson. Judson's teacher said that he's an amazing reader and loves helping all the other students. Also, one day, he tells me pretty much every day that he wants to take my job and be principal of the building. So he's ready to take the keys and the walkie-talkies, so we'll make it happen, I think, here someday this year. Next, I would like to recognize our third grade student, Ms. Destiny Sproll. Destiny's teacher says she works hard in all her subjects and is very kind and caring towards her classmates. She leads by a good example every day. Next, I have Neymar Pineda de la Cruz, one of our fourth grade students. I don't think he's here tonight. Neymar's, his teacher said that he works very hard at school and puts forth 100% effort in his work every day. He's also a good friend that likes to help each other's and work in teams. So, thank you, Neymar. I also have another fourth grade student, Angelique de la Cruz. Come on up, Angelique. Angelique's teachers say love her and the. Angelique's teachers say love her and love how she works and is the passion for reading and what she does every day. She has very creative ideas to share with her classmates and works well with everybody in school. Now on to fifth grade, Eden Sutton. Come on up, Eden. Eden's teachers say that she is a true born leader in the school. She works very hard at schoolwork and she does a great job leading. Our SGA is the president. She is also a member of the basketball team for the girls and the girls cheerleading team, so she does both. And she also won third place in the district's science fair for Elizabeth City. Great job, Eden. And then last, I would like to recognize Jonathan Green. He couldn't make it today. It's his birthday, along with someone else's birthday, too, I hear. He's a fifth grade student, and his teacher said that he has a passion for learning and he loves aviation. So even though he took today off for his birthday, I know where he went. He went to the Aviation Museum in Virginia Beach. So, he's still learning. He leads in his classroom by staying positive and setting a great example for others. He also was a second-place district science fair winner for ECPPS. Way to go, Jonathan. So at this time, that concludes our recognitions, and we're going to show the video for Weeksville now.
Welcome back to Weeksville Elementary School, home of the Bulldogs. This year, we are that B-school for Elizabeth City Pasquotaine Public Schools. We are 1.5% away from being that top A-school, and we're going to get there. Got some great initiatives going on this school year. We are still doing our mindfulness and our resiliency with Cal Minds Kind Hearts. We've established a strong SGA student body where they're creating some good initiatives for the students, getting excitement around the school. We also are an advanced teacher role school where we are developing teacher leaders inside our building.
I'm Mallory Dale. I'm second grade teacher at Weeksville, and something that I incorporated this year is social-emotional in our morning meeting. So, we just kind of sit and talk and get ourselves ready for the day. Might be some breathing techniques, things that they can use to kind of regulate themselves if they're feeling out of what we've learned, our okay zone. So, it's been very beneficial.
So, a morning meeting, you know, helps build our classroom community. It gets the kids engaging with one another, and so we start each day with a greeting. They get to greet their classmates, and then we do some sort of activity. So today, we complimented our classmates and then got some wiggles out with a freeze dance. And then after our freeze dance, we kind of settle our bodies back down with some of our SEL strategies. And so today, we practiced our birthday candle breathing, and then we have a morning message, and so then the kids are ready to go.
Hi, my name is Eden Sutton. I am the SGA president of Weeksville Elementary School. I am in the fifth grade, and I have been here for six years.
My name is Jacob Raper, and I'm the vice president of Weeksville Elementary. I've been here for six years, and I'm in the fifth grade.
I wanted to be SGA president because I've been told multiple times that I'm a great leader, and I just wanted to make sure the school had fun because I love fun and I love learning. So, why not just add it together and make learning fun?
Well, we have meetings with the SGA peers, and we discuss like Spirit Week. So, we get for Christmas this year, we did a Santa shop at Friday, and it was really fun, in my opinion.
It's important to be a school leader because if you're not leading and you're not doing what you're supposed to, then you can throw off the whole school. You can make-- you can make other people start acting like wrong, not acting-- not act right. So if you lead and you show other people how to act, then I think that's very good and you can help the whole school out.
We are Weeksville Bulldogs where everything you do every day matters.
Thank you, everyone, for visiting Weeksville Elementary School. We were glad to share with you all the amazing things that are going on out here. Come on out and join us anytime.
We would like to say thank you to all of our Weeksville staff and students, and at this time, this would be our public comments section of the meeting, and we do not have anyone signed up for public comment this evening. We are going to move into the superintendent's report, but before we do, I know a lot of you are saying, "Okay, it is time for me to go home and cook dinner." And we realize that. If you just bear with us and let us do our superintendent's report and our student board member reports, then we will take a short recess so that you can go out and get that hungry crew fed for dinner. So we're going to turn things over now to Dr. Parker for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I will be brief for the reports so that the highlight of the reports, our student board members can jump in. Just two things I want to mention here. One, I want to say to our families and our staff in particular that have been patient and flexible with us as we've had to adjust school schedules due to weather. One, I appreciate the patience and flexibility of everyone. We recognize that when these weather events happen that folks work, that they have jobs, they have commitments, and anytime we delay or modify our school schedule, we know that has an impact on the operations of families. So, as we prioritize safety first and recognize that those multi-ton buses have a different approach on the highway, and we have to consider that in our younger drivers in high school, we recognize that a delay of school comes at an inconvenience at the minimum. So, thank you for everybody who's worked with us on that as we prioritize safety. I hesitate to jinx it, but it looks like we're hoping we can move into this season and be in the clear, but somebody did tell me that the Farmer's Almanac said this weekend is supposed to snow again, according to Farmer's Almanac. So, you know, but that's not me taking one side or the other on snow. That's just saying what I heard. So hopefully, we'll be-- we'll be in the clear soon on snow. The second thing I'll mention here is I want to thank our education foundation for a recent fundraiser over the weekend that they held, and was able to have a really successful fundraiser in partnership with Monteros. And Andy Montero helped us with a soup sale, and I believe we were able to sell all of the soup that had been prepared. It's a very successful fundraiser. And I also want to mention that our child nutrition department, I see some of whom are here tonight, Tammy Reinhardt, is here prepared rolls. I don't know if anybody in the house remembers-- two things come to my mind from school lunch, spaghetti, and two, the rolls that were so good, and they were like Golden Corral rolls, if anybody knows what I'm talking about. So, our child nutrition department prepared some of those and sold them at the fundraiser at Monteros, and you can take them, they're frozen. And Ms. Reinhardt's here, and if anybody liked the rolls, they could see her. I know we have some left, but you can get the rolls ready and put them and bake them, and then you get Golden Corral rolls, too. And so you can do it on the fundraiser. So, what a wonderful fundraiser, and thanks to Tammy and the child nutrition department and Monteros for really helping us out with this fundraiser. Just an example of there of how people come together in Elizabeth City for the greater good. With that, I'll see the remainder of my time and divert over to our student board members for their reports. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Good evening, everyone. It feels good to be back after two months and see all of you again. I hope everyone is kicking off the year with a good start-- a good start, because our school is. Our school held its Fall Theme Expo last semester, and I would like to recognize our winners. First place goes to Zoe Little. Second place goes to Casey DeBoer, Kira Greer, Kaylee Hilaire, and Asaya Brothers. And third place goes to Sydney Dokendorf, Rowan Kreitz, and Maddie Bundan. DECA has been preparing for the Career Development Conference through mock role plays, practice tests, and fundraising. They sold Bestie Boo bags the 14th of February to fundraise for competition, and recently sold Krispy Kreme as swell. Competition is being held this week in Greensboro, North Carolina. Wish our club luck. We'll trust they'll do well. Our cafeteria staff also had a cookie fundraiser this month, and all the proceeds benefited our school nutrition education. My classmates really like these cookies, and we appreciate all of our staff, especially our lunch ladies, as they are the heart of our school. AFJROTC has been on the move as well. They have been preparing for our unit inspection happening this Friday. They also conducted an awareness presentation at the middle school. Through exposure, we hope to recruit potential cadets. Our school also had a course fair this past week where we had the opportunity to showcase the multitude of courses and opportunities that rising freshmen have. Current students were also there to provide insights. I would also like to thank our school counselors for all that they have done to support our students. It has been a busy month as our students have been applying for scholarships. Our graduation coach has created a bulletin board outside of the library to celebrate our senior college acceptance letters as well. Our principal also held a student and staff check-in through Google Meet during this past week when we were virtual to see how we were doing, and we played Jeopardy and watched everyone have a good time in a more relaxed environment. We would also like to recognize our very own Ariana Skels, who placed fourth at state competition for wrestling in her respective weight class. This concludes my report, but I would also like to include that Brandon, Erica, and I had the opportunity to attend and speak at the Committee of 100 in early January, the Public School Forum of North Carolina Exit Issues in late January, and the Delta Kappa Gamma Lunch in early February. I know I say this often, and I don't mind saying it again, but thank you all for trusting us and providing us with these opportunities to network and engage with people within our community and our state.
Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see all of you again. It's been two months we haven't been here in a while. I hope you all enjoyed the snow because I know I did. I enjoyed the break. I thank you guys for it. At the Early College, sophomores and juniors have had the opportunity to receive ACT prep through the Princeton Review. This opportunity will help improve their overall ACT scores. On Saturday night, we will have a semifinal dance, Casino Royale, and the Dolphins Den on the COA campus from 7:00 PM until 10:00 PM. Our PTO is hosting a Captain Bob's Pork Chop Plate Sale on Wednesday, March 5th, from 11:00 AM until 2:00 in the COA parking lot. Tickets are $12. I hope y'all are listening. Meals include pork chop, green beans, mac and cheese, and hush puppies. We are raising money to help with prom costs. If anyone would like a ticket, please see me or my principal. I'm gonna say that again. Please see me or my principal. We need some money, guys. Prom is on a Saturday, April 5th, at the Arts of Almar. The theme is Starry Night, and we are excited about this event. Our semester is almost one half over, and we have many other events planned for students. Thank you again, and I thank the board for this opportunity.
Thank you so much to our student board members, and at this time, as promised, we are going to take a very short recess, just a couple of minutes, so we can transition for those of you that need to. We will gavel back in in just a few.
I'm stuck between the two. I told Zoe. She said that she was awesome. I should've listened. But that's crazy, and not that she was a businesswoman for the conservation of the park, right?
I was looking at her.
There was another guy right next to us, and she was asking where I was from, and I was like, "I live in the city." And Zoe goes, "Does he sail?" And I was like, "Yeah, she graduated from the park." She was like, "I have a brother that's graduating from the park." I don't know what's his name, and then it started like all split. Yeah.
Item F on new business. But they're gonna-- there's gonna be a motion to suspend the policy. And then they're actually gonna vote on the top nine policy. They're gonna reinstate the policy if they suspend it.
Yeah.
It's gonna be policy 24. Well, we're reverting back to the original. But no more education coming out with new policies.
Go to state.
Look, that's a big time. I don't have an extra copy.
I only heard a select few got into Carolina, but majority of the people that got into Carolina got into state as well, and vice versa.
Is that-- is that both things?
No, it's not. It's a good-- it's--
I like y'all.
Yeah, I'm a--
But if I wasn't one--
Yes, it is. Yeah, exactly.
I know she had a--
Yeah, just saying, you got to know.
I know. Because I saw her daughter this morning. And she was telling me how she was participating in UNC and state as well.
Alrighty, we are going to continue on with our meeting, and now we are at needing a motion to approve our consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. A second. Thank you, Ms. Boggs. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on the consent agenda this evening? If not, can you please signify a positive vote to accept the consent agenda with a raise of hands? Please note that is a unanimous vote, but that Ms. Bowlen is not present. All right, now, we are going to move into items for information, and I am going to turn things over to Dr. Parker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're excited tonight to welcome the executive director of the North Carolina Teaching Fellows Program, and Ms. Kelly Cowe is going to introduce Mr. Bennett Jones. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you. Good evening, Board Chair Cobb, Vice Chair Perezza, Board members, Superintendent Parker, and members of the community. I am here to introduce Dr. Bennett Jones, the Director of North Carolina Teaching Fellows Program. Program. But before he comes up, I'd like to share a little bit about our partnership. The North Carolina Teaching Fellows Program Commission has selected 20 public school districts across the state to receive a recruitment grant to promote the Teaching Fellows Program and the teaching profession at whole, and we are proud to be one of them. This program allows us to expand awareness of the North Carolina Teaching Fellows Program and launch the Teacher Cadet Program, which provides our high school students with new opportunities to explore, be inspired by, and prepare for careers in education. At this time, I'd like to welcome Dr. Bennett Jones to share more information about the Teaching Fellows Program.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Board Members, Dr. Parker. It's great to be here. I will share two quick stories if I can, real quick. One, I am the principal that had both Daniel Manzer and Monica Manzer working for me in Johnston County, and then they came to me in 2020 and said they were moving here, and I quit much, not long after that and took this job. So they were phenomenal, and it was great to see them when they moved here. So I've known them for a while. And two, I want to give a shout out to Dr. Parker and your students. I was at the Exit Issues Event a couple of weeks ago and got a chance to hear about your community schools and the things you're doing, and left so impressed with the great work that ECPPS is doing in their schools, and kudos to all of you on your continued efforts. I am here tonight, my name is Bennett Jones, and I am the Director of North Carolina Teaching Fellows Program. I come to you as a lifelong educator. I was a 25-year K-12 educator, finished as a high school principal in Johnston County before I moved into this role. The North Carolina Teaching Fellows Program has a long history in North Carolina, and it got truncated in 2011 and was brought back by the Journal Assembly in 2017 under a couple of different parameters. But we continue to be a merit-based loan forgiveness program for anyone interested in becoming a good teacher in North Carolina in elementary STEM or exceptional children or teacher licensure areas. We are at 10 institutions in the state of North Carolina, stretching from East Carolina in the east to Appalachian State in the west, both public and private institutions. As we've continued to move forward in our work in promoting the program, I think it is vital that we reinvest our efforts to recruit actively in high schools. As a former high school principal, it came to me that I didn't offer any type of teacher preparation courses. I offered courses in health sciences and in business marketing and other careers that people might pursue, but yet, over 20 of my staff members were Clayton High graduates, yet I didn't offer a teacher preparation course. And as I have thought about it is, why are we not offering more teacher preparation opportunities, whether it's in the CTE pathway or whether it's in Teacher Cadet? And so what we reached out to do is to create a recruitment grant of $55,000 annually for renewable up to three additional years, so a four-year pilot, to where we would work with districts on implementing some type of teacher preparation program that would not only promote Teaching Fellows but promote the teaching profession as a whole. And so we really were strategic as a commission as to looking at different groups, from large districts to small districts, rural districts to urban districts, border districts, from the mountains to the coast. We have 20 partnered districts stretching and covering over all eight DPI regions, and we're excited to be here to share with that. Elizabeth City Passmatank Public Schools is one of our 20 that we're working with. We're excited about the great direction that this district is taking and to prepare students, and we know that in order to prepare great students, we need great teachers, and we need to continue to work to fill that teacher pipeline. And Teaching Fellows is a resource to help bridge that gap from people who are interested in being teachers to becoming teachers, to be highly qualified teachers and effective teachers when they return to the classroom. And so we hope that this grant is beneficial to your district to allow you to be able to facilitate the Teacher Cadet Program or teaching as a profession, however your plan chooses, and work collaboratively with other districts as we work to strengthen and support the teacher workforce pipeline in North Carolina. So thank you for being leaders. I have a presentation check for you. The real check also came in the mail, really? It did come in the mail? So it's coming as well, but the exciting thing is, is that this is renewable, so each year we'll be able to learn about what you're doing, track your progress, and share that opportunity and send you additional funds to continue this program for the next four years. So congratulations and kudos to Elizabeth City Passmatank Public Schools.
I'll give you my account number and routing number. Not five million.
What a wonderful night, and thank you, Kelly Cowell, for all your hard work that goes along with that. Now we're gonna move on in our agenda to the new business at hand, and we will again turn it over to Dr. Parker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're going to move with asking the board to take action on the 25-26 calendar for the Early College, and Mr. Sammy Fudge is going to come up to speak to that. And as the board will remember, we're on a biennium for our traditional academic calendar. The board approved two of those years in, I believe, October, but we do one year for the Early College because we follow the community colleges' schedule. So that's what this is here about. Mr. Fudge is gonna lead us in on that and take any questions. Thank you, Sammy.
Good evening, Madam Board Chair Cobb, Madam Vice Chair Perezza, Board Members, and Dr. Parker. Just wanted to highlight in some of the upcoming 25-26 calendar for the Early College, July 31st through August 7th is required teacher days. August 8th is an optional workday. August 11th, the first day of school. May 15th is the end of the fourth nine weeks, and May 16th is graduation 2026. So mark that on your calendars. So we're asking that the board move to approve recommended 25-26 Early College Calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Fudge. We are, what we're gonna do, Board Members, is since these items are not really related to each other, we're gonna do a motion after each one. Okay? So we need a motion to approve the Early College Calendar.
I move that we approve the Early College School Calendar for 2025-26.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Ms. Warden. Dr. Williams gave us a second. Any discussion or questions? If not, can we see a positive vote by show of hands? Let the record reflect that is unanimous except for Ms. Bowlen. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Fudge.
Thank you so much. Okay.
Good evening, Board Chair Cobb, Vice Chair Perezza, and other distinguished Board Members. I'm pleased to stand before you tonight to introduce the architect for the Early Childhood Center here at the former Passmatank Elementary School. If you recall, in October, the board voted to award the architectural contract to Oakley-Collyer Designs Architectural Design Services, and Ms. Ann Collier is here tonight to talk to you about that proposal.
It's a pleasure I stand here tonight before you. As Ms. Tilly said, I'm Ann Collier with the firm of Oakley-Collyer Architects. We are in Rocky Mount. We work all over eastern North Carolina, and we have submitted a proposal to design, engineer and design, the Early Childhood Center here at this school. After a little history about our firm and about what we've done so far, our firm's been in business since 1988. A partner in the firm, we have a staff of 17, five architects, so we have lots of capacity to do work for you. We do primarily as local government, municipal schools, town halls, anything related to local government, we work on all over eastern North Carolina. And schools are particularly my favorite. I cut my teeth on those. As I got out of design school, that was the first firms I worked with were school design firms. So that's one of my passions in architecture. We have toured the school. We met with the staff in early January. For us, for us to understand what it is you need, we want to make sure we see and touch and feel and understand the scope and the vision. We understand there's a rich history here at this school. To honor, to make sure we keep that intact, we place importance on that, and we understand that the project of an Early Childhood Center is an exciting one. And so we have toured the school, we have received existing plans, the original plans for the school. We've done a little bit of work just putting those existing drawings into our system, and all of that was done to create a proposal for you because what we want to know is how big is big, if that makes sense. So what our proposal covers is to take the amount of school, it's about, it's two of the wings, approximately about half the school that is identified for that. We would be handling architecture, engineering, all of the engineering disciplines, including fire protection. We would look at building code, the structural capacities and the bones, we call it, of the building, HVAC, air conditioning, heating, fire alarm, all of the life safety things, and as well as the programs that are required to put in Early College in this camp, on this campus. We understand the requirements of the state, the DPI for Early Childhood. We'll bring all of that to you, as well as handle all of those reviews and approvals for you. So with that, the proposal that you have, I think, in your packets outlines our scope of work. After conversation, we have proposed to do it in two phases. One is a preliminary design, again, just to see how much we can do in this project within that parameter of your funding, and then carry it from that point on into the full construction documents. That total is in your folder at, oop, let me get to that, for, again, for all of the engineering and architectural services, and including, let me add, bidding, construction administration, all the way from to date tonight until you open school and then, you know, after that, as needed. So that proposal we are presenting to you tonight is for $141,800. That covers, again, all those services. We would propose a timeline, also have given you that in the proposal. Unfortunately, we did talk about how soon can we get this open, but without knowing all of the things we need to address on the state level with reviews, I don't believe that this fall is achievable in the schedule to get this renovation done. So, but it doesn't necessarily take as long as the next fall. So the proposal that I've, the timeline proposal I've included addresses everything that would be from day one to move in, and there's still some time left in there for the summertime for, to bring other services in that you need as far as furniture and those kind of things, that we can also help you with. I'll be glad to entertain any questions. Again, I don't know if there's anything else you would like to hear from me.
Thank you so much, Ms. Collier. Everyone should have had access to and seen the packet. So at this time, we are looking for a motion to approve item B.
I'll make a motion to approve item B.
Thank you, Mr. Old. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Warden. Any questions or discussion? Okay, if not, please signify your positive vote with a show of hands. Okay, let the record reflect that is unanimous with the exception of Ms. Bowlen. Thank you so much, Ms. Collier.
Thank you. We look forward to getting started.
And we'll move right along to item C and then D on that as well. And so Dr. McPherson, if you'd like to come forward and speak to those pieces there.
Good evening, Chair Cobb, Vice Chair Perezza, School Board Members, and Dr. Parker. Tonight I have an update, updated contract for Rivermont, a therapeutic private day, and a contract for Skyrocketing Dreams, which will transport one of our students to and from Rivermont. Last month, y'all approved a contract for this program that was located in Currituck, but due to unforeseen circumstances, that program has collapsed, but the program is available in another city. So I've reached out to the transportation company. They have provided me with the different documents that are needed to ensure that there's a safe transport to and from the school. So if you guys have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer any of those.
Thank you so much. Okay, so we are gonna start with item C. Need a motion for item C, please.
I make a motion to approve item C, Rivermont, new story, and item...
Just see. Okay, we have a motion to approve item C.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Warden. We have a second. Any questions or discussion for Ms. McPherson for item C? Okay, if not, please signify a positive vote with a show of hands. Let the record reflect that is unanimous. And now we'll move on to a motion for item D.
Make a motion to approve Skyrocketing Dreams, item D.
Okay, Ms. Perezza made the motion for item D. Can we get a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Williams. Any questions or discussion about the transportation? Okay, if not, please signify your positive vote with a show of hands. Let the record reflect that is unanimous. Thank you so much, Ms. McPherson.
Thank you.
And now we're gonna move on to item E. Scholastic Summer Self-Select Quote, and Ms. Kinsel.
Good evening, Madam Chair. I'm Vice Chair Perezza, members of the board, and Superintendent Parker. Tonight we're asking the board to approve a quote for the scholastic books in the amount of $53,996.81. In all transparency, the quote that's in your packet did not include tax. They see us as a tax exempt, but we are going to add the tax as well. So that brings the total to $57,776.59. Again, this is an estimate. We will know hard, hard and fast cost after we select the books that the students will be choosing from. These books that are being purchased will be used to support Elizabeth City Passmatank Public Schools' third annual summer reading book program. And as in years past, we're thrilled to be able to provide students the opportunity to grow their library at home. With five additional books being given this year, we hope that that's going to help them create a robust library that'll kind of help them get along their way during the summertime and encourage them to go seek out more books, hopefully at the public library. Again, this year, students in grades K through 5 will have an opportunity to select their books from a group of about 15 titles that will be selected per grade level. With the approval of plans, we will then soon be underway with getting the details in order and getting logistics for each school of how this is gonna unfold, as well as create a theme and other activities that will support parents and their children with fun activities through their summer reading adventure. I'm certain that as plans are finalized, under the leadership of Dr. Waples and Elizabeth Jordan, the board is sure to hear more about this fantastic program and opportunity for our kids. So with that, I respectfully request the board's approval of the Scholastic Summer Reading Book Purchase.
Thank you so much. And so now we are looking for a motion for letter E, Scholastic Summer Program.
I move that we accept the Scholastic Summer Self-Select Reading Program.
Thank you, Ms. Warden. Can I get a second?
Second.
Ms. Perezza said...
We're gonna arm wrestle, I think.
We're excited about that. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion, questions? So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion questions? If not, please signify your positive vote with a show of hands. That would be unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And now we will move on to letter F. Title IX Policy Revisions.
Chair Cobb, Vice Chair Perez, and Board members, good evening. So in July of 2024, the North Carolina School Boards Association issued special policy updates to address changes in response to the, to the new Title IX regulations issued by the Department of Education that were to go into effect on August 1st of 2024. Title IX is the federal law that prohibits sex discrimination, including sex-based harassment in the Board's education program, which includes all school system operations, services, and activities. The new proposed regulations broaden the scope of what constitutes sex discrimination and sex-based harassment prohibited by Title IX and eliminated the requirement that complaints of sexual harassment be handled under a separate process. The Board did adopt these recommended revisions. In January, one of the courts, considering challenges to new regulations, entered an opinion, which while not a permanent injunction, it does prohibit the Department of Education from enforcing the regulations at this time. The North Carolina School Boards Association is working through this, but has also advised that we should seek guidance from the Board's attorney. And we have been working with the attorneys to revise the policies that are presented to you this evening to ensure we are in compliance. So a quick summary of the changes that we are adopting this evening or requesting to be adopted this evening. The first is policy seventeen, ten, forty, twenty, seventy-two, thirty, discrimination and harassment prohibited by federal law. This separates the grievous, the grievance process and clarifies the report versus complaint and references the grievance process, which will now be defined in a new policy seventeen, twenty-six, forty, thirty-six, seventy-two, thirty-seven. It also updates the legal and cross-references. Policy seventeen, twenty, forty, thirty, seventy-two, thirty-five, Title IX Non-Discrimination on the Basis of Sex clarifies report versus complaint and references the applicable policies for grievance process, again, updating cross-references. Policies seventeen, twenty-five, forty, thirty-five, and seventy-two, thirty-six, Title IX Harassment Prohibited Conduct and Reporting Process clarifies the reporting process for sexual harassment and references policy for the grievance policy for sexual harassment. Policy seventeen, twenty-six, forty, thirty-six, seventy-two, thirty-seven, Title IX Sexual Harassment Grievance Process. This policy, we're actually asking the Board to adopt this one this evening, and it defines the grievance, the grievance process for sexual harassment. Policy forty, twenty-three, seventy-two, thirty-three, Pregnant and Parenting Students and Employees. This really simplifies and clarifies the requirements for students and employees, separating the two. And policy forty-three, twenty-nine, seventy-three, eleven, Bullying and Harassing Behavior Updates Policy References in Section A. So this evening, policy code twenty-four, twenty states that policies introduced and recommended to the Board must be in writing, and policies will not be adopted until a subsequent meeting. The policy further states that the Board may waive the requirements of this policy in accordance with policy twenty-four, fifty, Suspension of Board Policies. So this evening, we are requesting that the Board, under three actions, first suspend the requirement of policy twenty-four, twenty, adopt these six new, or six policy revisions effective immediately, and then reinstate policy twenty-four, twenty.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Okay, so first of all, we need a motion to waive.
Chair Cobb, I make a motion pursuant to policy twenty-four, fifty, to suspend the requirement of policy twenty-four, twenty that the policies that are here before action, in order to adopt them with immediate effect.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, and I need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Old has seconded the motion. Do we have any discussion about that we are motioning to waive? Does anybody have any discussion about that before we go any further? Okay. So now we need to vote on suspending the policy. Can I see a positive show of hands? Let the record reflect that that is unanimous. Next, we need a motion on the floor to approve the six policies effective immediately. Okay, so Ms. Perezza has made a motion to approve the new six policies effective immediately. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Old. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion about the immediate approval of these six policies? Okay, if not, please signify your positive vote with a show of hands. Let the record reflect that that is unanimous. Now we need to make a motion to reinstate policy twenty-four, twenty.
I make a motion to reinstate policy twenty-four, twenty.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Perezza. Can I get a second? Thank you, Ms. Boggs. We have a motion and a second to reinstate policy twenty-four, twenty. Do we have any discussion? If not, please show your positive vote with a show of hands, please. Okay, let the record reflect that is unanimous. And we are good. Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Next, we're going to move on to the Participate Learning Financial Proposal with Ms. Tilly.
Good evening again. In your packet was a proposal by Participate to continue offering services for our Global Leaders Programs in all the elementary schools and at River Road, and as well as the dual-language immersion program cost. The total cost was three twenty, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the floor to approve the Participate Learning Financial Proposal?
I make a motion to approve item G, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six, Participate Learning Financial Proposal.
Thank you, Ms. Boggs. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Warden. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the Participate Learning Financial Proposal? Questions or discussion? Okay, if not, please signify your positive vote with a show of hands. Let the record reflect that that is unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Tilly. And then finally, we have letter H, which is what was the amendment of our agenda this evening, promotion standards. And I'm going to let Dr. Parker address that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Having a presentation here, but also provided the Board a handout. I think it might be a little bit easier to read with the, with the printed copy here, so each Board member has a copy of that. But the proposal here tonight stems with really some evolution that is occurring right now in high schools across the state for promotion standards. And we've become aware in the past couple of weeks of an area where I think our promotion standards could be a little more student-friendly. And so that's what the proposal was based on tonight. But as many in the room, and we have many educators here tonight, can remember that when North Carolina transitioned over to most of our schools in the state, not all of them now, but most of the schools in the state have transitioned in the past two decades over to a four-by-four block schedule where students take four courses a semester and they're ninety minutes typically. When that happened, it became very common for student, for school districts to have a requirement for graduation to be between twenty-eight and thirty-two credits. Since that time, there's been some evolution on one's progress toward graduation. And there are just so many opportunities in front of our young people today, particularly stemming from the partnership over the past ten years with our community college system that's emerged through a program we call Career in College Promise. And so we have, right now, many of our students that earn, and Brandon's on track to be one of those, a student who will earn a high school diploma in four years and also graduate with an associate's degree at the same time. And two decades ago, that just wasn't possible. So I just say that we're in a, a place now where students have so many options. And so we're trying to think about how we evolve our promotion standards to reflect some of the evolution that's happening right now in just opportunities in the high school. So currently, for a student to graduate in North Carolina, they're required at a minimum to have twenty-two credit, twenty-two credits. That is evolved from legislation over the past year that has now placed all high schools in North Carolina on the twenty-two credit. As you will remember, three years ago, our local board policy required students to have twenty-eight credits. We, two years ago, asked the Board to modify that for HLTRIG, to give HLTRIG a twenty-two credit option and move our credits to twenty-six. The Board approved that, which I think was a really helpful thing. And then about six months after the Board took that action, the state passed legislation putting every high school on twenty-two credit. And so in many ways, the Board of Education was progressive and saw the evolution of that. And then the state followed with this legislation. And so what that means is students can now graduate high school potentially in their junior year, depending on their circumstances and when they achieve credit. And so that's causing this conversation that we're having tonight and sort of the evolution around the value of some students graduating early, but also the value of some students staying for that fourth year as well and accessing the traditional high school experience for four years. So currently, as it stands tonight, before these suggested revisions, our local requirements for graduation here, or promotion rather, deal with six credits being promoted to your minimum, this is the minimum requirement to be promoted, be promoted to tenth grade, a minimum of six credits. One of those must have been English one completed. Promotion to eleventh grade, a minimum of twelve credits, one of which must be English two, and also one credit be Math one. And then promotion to senior year be a minimum of seventeen credits, one of which must be an English three credit. And so if you'll turn over, I've identified here on this next slide how one could receive that English three credit currently. There's really one of two options. You could take English three before your junior year. Mostly, I'd say a majority of our students take English three in their fall or spring semester of junior year. You could take it outright. And one of our English teachers, we have three English teachers that sit on the Board right now, and I would suspect probably ended up teaching junior English or English three at one point. That would clearly give you the English three credit. You've met your graduation requirement. If you got seventeen credits, you move on to your senior year. A second, a little more complicated pathway, is a student could enroll beginning first semester junior year. In our traditional high schools, could enroll in COA English. And there's a requirement from the community college system that requires students to take two community college prerequisite courses before they can enroll in the community college class to give them English three. The prerequisite courses are English one-eleven and one-twelve. And so right now, as it stands, our students take, that want to follow this option two pathway, they would take English one-eleven fall semester junior year. Then spring semester junior year, those students are taking two English courses at the same time. They're taking college, one-twelve, and they're taking English three on our side. They complete both of those things at the end of their junior year. They're considered a senior. They move on. And many of these kids take college English two-thirty-one in the summer or fall, and they get that English three credit. But if you'll notice there, they're getting English three sort of twice. They took it with us as English three, but they also could have gotten the, the graduation standard from the community college. Because when you take English two-thirty-one, that's the same thing as if you took English three in our high school. So if you'll notice there, we're requiring students to take one unnecessary course, which is English three. And so if you'll flip over, what our proposal is, is to give students the option for that promotion. One thing I'll, I'll point out on that previous slide, if you'll, if you'll notice there, the bait, the way it's currently set up, it's impossible for a student to be promoted to their senior year unless they also take English three. Because we require English three as promotion standard, and there would be no way to get English three until your summer or fall year if you took it through the college side. So that's why we've been requiring English three in addition to those three college courses. But that's four courses to get one graduation credit. And so that is, again, that's an evolution of the changes of the twenty-two credit diploma and some of these other things. And that has sort of brought our awareness to, to this one issue here. Here's the proposed revisions tonight. One, to keep the English three as a promotion standard, but give kids two options. One, option one stays the same. They get English three as they would want it. They keep rolling. We're asking the Board to consider a revision to option two and remove that English three requirement on the, on the option two side. So in this, a student would take English one-eleven. They would need to have passed one-eleven and one-twelve junior year through the college. And then if they were enrolled in two-thirty-one in the summer or fall, that enrollment in that would give the principal the ability to go ahead and promote them to senior year so that they could pass on. But a point I'll mention here is to even get this far, a student will, would have to have passed one-eleven and one-twelve. So therefore demonstrating that they, one, can handle college coursework, and two, demonstrating that they're ready to move on to get that English three. It just gives the principal some flexibility to promote that kid. And the reason we're asking the Board to consider this is reducing those four classes to three then allows a student in this pathway to switch out that English three credit for maybe a CTE credit. Maybe they want to take band there or course, or maybe they want to take a marking class or an advanced PE class. So what this does is it opens up an additional block there in that student's schedule where they can still get their English three credit, be promoted to senior year, but also maybe take a course they otherwise would not have taken. And so the last slide right here, I just identified for the Board some advantages to this revision. One, we want to continue to encourage more students to take COA courses. One, they're paid for through the CCP program. Two, it allows students in the traditional high school to be able to move toward getting an associate's two, just like we, we indicated that Brandon will get at the early college. Secondly, it will reduce the class sizes of some of our advancing, or our level three and four English courses at the high, at the high school. Because we have students right now that are sitting in English three that wouldn't have to do that if this revision were to take place. So it'll allow our high school English teachers to have smaller class sizes in three, English three and four, allow students to take more classes face-to-face with us like CTE. And then finally, it removes duplication of credits. So that's one of the things that we're really looking at very heavily right now is maximizing our time with kids. Because if kids can graduate now with twenty-two credit, as they can, we want to maximize our time with them. And we don't want them replicating and duplicating classes and efforts. We want to give them unique experiences that are really creative in the scheduling. So I think this is an example of that there. So I said a lot here, so I want to pause and take comments or questions from the Board. I wasn't an English teacher, and I mentioned we have three on the Board, so I hope I explained that in English terms that were helpful there. So let me pause there for any questions or comments from the Board.
Anybody have anything they want to ask or share?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, so we are looking at this evening, a motion to approve these revisions on the promotion standards, letter H. Do I have someone that was willing to make that motion?
Same move.
Thank you, Ms. Perezza. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Warden. So we have the motion and the second. Any other discussion questions considering this motion? If not, would everyone please indicate your positive vote with a show of hands? Let the record reflect that that is a unanimous vote. And that is it for the evening. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Positive show of hands for a vote. That is unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Have a safe trip home. We appreciate your presence. Have a good night.